Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Um, we're gonna begin this city council meeting. I will ask before we start this meeting is, uh, I don't know if we have Pastor Cortland in the house. Miss Pastor Cortland, would ask that you, uh, start us off and Rick, can you, uh, ask the clerk to come in as we start the meeting?
Let us pray. Our God and our Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come to you tonight and to turn to you in prayer. We thank you for every civil servant, every elected official here tonight. We thank you for their hard work and sacrifice. We thank you for your guidance, for the leadership of our city. We ask tonight, oh God, that you would continually bless every integral part that makes this city work tonight. We ask that you give them wisdom and a discerning heart to skillfully operate in their capacities. We thank you tonight for healing the mayor and we thank you for his recovery. We thank you for every city leader, the staff, and the members of the city council in this room. We ask tonight that you give us wisdom to solve problems, to bring order and stability in our communities. In this season of Advent, where many families may be grieving for losses they have suffered, we ask that you give comfort and that you touch them and that you give them grace. And we ask that this meeting be advanced and go forth in love, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. So, under the law, we're required to, um, if we have COVID protocols, we can have a hybrid meeting, which we will have tonight, or we can participate via Zoom. Uh, tonight, we have a hybrid meeting with, uh, three aldermen in council chambers and I believe two aldermen joining us via Zoom. Uh, we are at some point gonna announce some stricter COVID procedures here at City Hall because our numbers are going up. And we wanna be conscious not only of our elected officials, but also be conscious of protecting our city employees. Many of you know that I just recently, uh, we have recovered from COVID. Uh, it is real. I'm fully vaccinated, uh, uh, received a booster shot. But we know that our numbers are spiking up and we have to protect our families. Uh, I wanna thank everyone who called me, called my family, and everyone in this city. Employees, uh, elected officials who have experienced COVID, family members that have gone through COVID. And I ask at this point that you guys, you know, kinda tamper down what we do over the holidays, uh, not only with your families, but in the community because COVID is real. Um, at some point, I will announce, I think I have, the number of deaths that have been attributed to COVID. Our vaccination rate in Cayman City is still hovering around forty-six percent. And I know we can do better, um, but I just challenge everybody to make sure that you start protecting your family. Uh, again, at some point, we will announce, uh, some enhanced COVID guidelines for the city of Cayman City, uh, and make sure we're protecting our employees. Uh, with that said, I would ask, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, please call a roll. For the record, we have Alderman Williams, uh, joining us via Zoom. We also have Alderman Patton, I believe, joining us via Zoom. Can, uh, Alderman Patton and Alderman, uh, Williams, for the record, and we also have Alderman Navarrete. Uh, for the record, can you please confirm via Zoom that you are there?
Alderman Patton is present.
For the record, Alderman Patton is present. For the record, Alderman Navarrete is present. Alderman Williams, we waiting on you?
Alderman Williams is present.
For the record, Alderman Williams is present. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Mayor, did you get my phone?
Yes, sir. Yes, Alderman, we did.
Okay, so, we'll say. Tillman.
Here.
And we have Alderman Williams via Zoom, Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman Patton via Zoom, Alderman Smith.
Here.
Thank, thank you. Um, so tonight's agenda, um, next item is the Pledge of Legions. I would invite everyone, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Legions. Is there any, uh, we're in public comment, uh, is there anyone for the record who would like to join us? If you can, step to the mic. The rules are, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Diane Ribicki. I've been up here a couple times. I live on thirteen forty-one Burnham and this is about the loud music that's continuing to blast. Uh, there is one sign I got put up on Burnham. Um, so I made, I took the liberty of copying these signs and I'm gonna mail these out to certain houses that I suspect. Um, I have a report for the police department. I know that the chief of police is on vacation right now. Um, my question, I got a question. If there can possibly be more signs put up also on Hirsch, on Green Bay, on the other side of Burnham? I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. It is twenty-four seven. The people that I suspect are written down and, um, I guess I'm blackballed from calling the cops because they feel that they don't hear anything. They won't come into my house. I mean, it's booming through my house. And, let's see, what else? Um, it's not your typical music out the car radio. It's this, I'm sure you've heard it. I've actually kinda made a rendition on my synthesizer at home. I'm sure you kinda can recognize it. And I wanna give you an idea of what it sounds like. That's like a bass, or like a kettle drum. It starts out real slow, real loud. And then there's a bass line going. If you can imagine kettle drum being blasted through your neighborhood when you're trying to sleep. Real slow, real loud. You can hear it at a dollar store, you can hear it in certain restaurants. This'll go on and on all night.
Diane, could you bring your comments to a close, please?
Well, I'm just saying, I wanna give the, um, police department an idea of what it sounds like. I'm sure they've heard it. And that's it, I'm just gonna keep back, keep coming back until this is resolved and this is not getting involved.
Thank you, and Diane, for the record, uh, I wanna thank you for coming up. I know you've been up several times. Our police chief did-
I know, I talked to the, the other night-
Diane, I'm sorry, this is not a back and forth. I'm gonna give you a response to your question. Just letting you know, the police chief did talk to you, he did canvass the area.
Yeah, he called me the other night.
So, your statement that the police department is not doing nothing is not correct. The police chief is involved.
Well, I'm being blackballed from calling them and that's not right.
That's not correct. We'll make sure we, we, if you give us the signs, we'll put the signs up and the police, they go out and canvass. Okay. Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else for, from the public who would like to come up and, uh, state anything on the agenda tonight? If so, please step to the mic. You have three minutes. And Alderman Patton, we'll make sure that whatever, uh, Diane provided tonight, that we'll send to you as well. Is there anyone from the public who would like to step to the mic, address anything on the agenda tonight? Not, uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, we are closing public comment now. We'll thank everyone for considering. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Uh, we do not have any minutes tonight for approval. So, just want to recognize that. Uh, the next item on the agenda are reports of standing committees. Uh, Finance, Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to bring to the attention of the residents of Cayman City and the city council tonight on tonight's agenda, uh, is the passage of the city's, uh, tax levy. We are not raising or increasing the tax levy this year. And if you have any, uh, concerns or questions, our finance director is here to answer the questions that you may have.
Alderman, do you, I think we should call the finance director up for the benefit of the public. If you wanna step to the mic and give the, uh, the council and the public a brief presentation of what we're doing. Uh, while he step into the mic, uh, we are required, um, by law to pass a tax levy, um, at a certain point. Uh, we had our public hearing and tonight's, uh, agenda is our tax levy, which will govern, uh, the corporate finances and the corporate structure of our tax levy and our special service district. We had a robust hearing on it and our finance director provided us documentation. So, John, if you can give us a report, uh, we would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, members of the public. Last month, we met as a finance, uh, as a committee of a whole, finance committee of a whole, and we discussed the tax levy. We, uh, in the analysis of the tax levy, we, the city council opted to keep the levy the same. So, there, uh, there is no increase over last year's extended tax levy. The debt service bonds will go down approximately six point seven percent, resulting in an overall decrease of just under one percent in the tax levy. Uh, there were some modifications though to the extended levy. The corporate levy, which is our main operating levy of the city, will go down four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The reason for that is to accommodate a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to the police pension levy and an additional two hundred thousand dollar increase to the fire pension levy. And then there was another adjustment of fifty thousand dollars more going to the IMRF pension and fifty thousand dollars less going to the social security pension. So, overall, the, uh, the levy will remain the same as, as the request of the city council. Uh, that, uh, covers what we did on the, under that section. We're also gonna have tonight our second levy, which will be presented as well. That levy is to extend three hundred thousand dollars for the special service area. The special service area was created in the late nineties. It encompasses basically River Oaks East and West. An analysis was done way back, uh, determining the extra costs that were incurred by public safety to the shopping area. And, uh, as in past, well, the past several years, we've extended a levy of three hundred thousand. That levy is only born on those businesses that are located in the River Oaks East and the River Oaks West shopping area. So, those are the two levies that are on the agenda. And as Mayor, as you pointed out, uh, we announced this, that there was no levy increase. Truth in taxation says we have to wait twenty days before we can pass the levy. Those twenty days have since passed. We're taking action at this meeting to pass them as the state, uh, state statutes require that we pass the tax levy by the last Tuesday of December. So, we'll be within that, uh, within that timeframe. And, uh, so that, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. And, and also to, to re- reiterate, we are not raising taxes on the Cayman City residents.
Correct. The extended levy is identical to last year's extended levy that the city will levy.
Can you-
Send me your report, please.
Okay, I will, I will send that.
Alderman, I'm sorry.
That's it, that's all I have. Thank you, Finance, Professor, and this fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Safety, Alderman Williams. Uh, Alderman Williams is via Zoom. Yes, we can hear you.
Now, we looking to call the public safety, uh, like they made a whole meeting, uh, before you, the leader, just to, uh, go with some of the, uh, gearing statistics and, uh, plan for the, um, winter spring, uh, public safety plan. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Williams. Uh, Public Utilities, Alderman Smith.
Uh, yes, I just wanna notify, uh, the council that, uh, the, uh, energy proposals that are currently under consideration, uh, the rankings have been published. I will be calling a meeting for preferably the committee of the whole to actually review the recommendations and to make some decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman, ordinance and resolutions?
Uh, no report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, Warfare, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Mayor pointed out, beginning in the meeting, Trump, Bush, Biden, there are, there are, again, and literally, you know, how they're affected and who did it. Hopefully, that, that performance will keep us all safe from, sorry for my dogs in the background, uh, keep us safe from, you know, serious, uh, homelessness and, and hospitalization but if the case is on the ground, if you have not got your vaccine, if you have not got your booster yet, please make sure you go out and get that, in light of that, and like to just make note at this point, given that three of us were not able to attend these tonight due to COVID cases. Um, you know, hopefully, the, the city council and Mayor will entertainingly sponsor me for the new year to give the opportunity to attend these meetings via Zoom going forward. So, please just continue to come back out. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson. For the record, Alderman Wilson is not on Zoom or in council chambers. Um, Public Works, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is the, uh, relief program that has, has up to December third. Still needs to be picked up prior to the first snowfall. This is called Public Works Department, uh, we can go to, uh, quarters, gate, and, uh, so, uh, every seven, seven zero eight, eight nine one, eight one six zero, uh, they will, uh, accommodate. Also, as a reminder, uh, regarding snowfall, please utilize driveways if the ride is possible. During the fall, do allow our public to stop, uh, to be able to take streets out. Some side streets are very narrow, most side streets are very narrow. Uh, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Under city council reports, I have a couple items to announce. Uh, I'll, tonight, the, the city, uh, just received word that we were granted eight hundred thousand dollars for our, uh, uh, clean, clean, clean energy program. And I'll let our city engineer explain. Uh, this great news for Cayman City is the state and federal government continues to recognize Cayman City in our grant plan, but I'll let our city engineer announce the other parts of our great news.
Well, yes, it's, uh, exciting to hear today that the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District has granted the city of Cayman City eight hundred thousand dollars to do a pilot program of five green infrastructure alleys. And for those of you who may not be familiar with that, the plan is to, to pave these alleys with paving blocks that allow for the water to permeate down into the ground and not to be above ground that the aggregate alleys that you have now have. So, rather than paving them with asphalt and have the water roll into the yards nearby or out into the street, these green infrastructure alleys, hopefully, if they work correctly, and this is a pilot program, that they will allow a good portion of the water to permeate down into the ground. So, it's a green program, it's exciting. The city will get eight hundred thousand dollars and the city will match, uh, that with a hundred thousand dollars. So, it's, uh, it's exciting. The hope, Mayor, is that we can be able to do a number of these each year with the help of the MWRD and be able to start paving these alleys in some of these key areas in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we will start with city council reports. Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Great news on the, the, the structure, uh, I guess I'm just trying to quickly, uh, fly me for the first ward, uh, I never saw, uh, about the city engineers already, but recommendations from the, from the, uh, containers, you know, you gotta be a sort of town, sorry, uh, for Matthew. But, um, uh, great news, uh, for jobs of you there and the, uh, city engineer, uh, that they've all, uh, via Zoom, I'll find you there, but thank you.
All right, Alderman, the other Alderman voted that you can't request, uh, alleys in the ward via Zoom. Uh, and they're gonna give that, uh, those four alleys to people who are in attendance here in the hybrid area. So, you won't be a part of the alley paving, sorry, Alderman? Uh, you cannot get that benefit via Zoom. Next, uh, we have Alderman Tillman for city council reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I would like to thank everybody that participated in myself and the fourth ward toy giveaway this past Saturday. Uh, that includes, but not limited to, uh, the mayor, the hive, uh, several businesses within the community, our police and fire department, inspectional services, um, Public Works, who came out very early to help us set up, came out very late to help us break, break down. Uh, we gave out nearly a thousand toys, um, and other items for the community. It was a wonderful event, as it is every year. Unfortunately, we had to hold it, um, as a drive-by this year. Uh, but, you know, everybody kinda jumped on board with the changes because of COVID and it was a success, so thank you all, uh, once again for that. Um, I want to let the residents know that we discussed action items at our last town hall meeting, uh, that was in December. Um, the third ward twenty twenty-two action meeting, action items. My office plans to put those items in writing for the residents who missed the meeting and we'll have a running update at all town hall meetings in the future. Uh, the next town hall meeting is February seventh. As a reminder, it's the first Monday of every month at six thirty at Downey Park. However, we're not having a meeting this January. So, the next meeting is February seventh, twenty twenty-two. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tillman. Alderman Williams, uh, city council report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to comment on the, um, my, me not being present and not being allowed to, uh, take advantage of good money. Um, so, I guess, uh, raise my voice, my voice to the soul, just I'm really, uh, um, the little bit, you know, uh, turns out. But, um, I just want to, I'll thank all the volunteers and everyone that played a meaningful part in the success toward the way this has been. Uh, Mayor, uh, city council, that your support, uh, group, police, fire department, several, um, members from the city community that made the contributions. Um, you know, volunteers, uh, the lives is, is, is our chapter. Uh, just wanna thank you all for your participation with me. We will be making some announcements, uh, uh, through resolution, uh, in the future. And I will give a little bit, because I want you to give me one. Um, with that being said, uh, me, uh, next meeting, uh, on the Thursday, will be, uh, scheduled this Monday, uh, February. Uh, so, if you can read my stand, so maybe if you have any questions here this Thursday, you can call the office, uh, seven oh eight, then that one, eight one nine four, that's already two one two, two two four zero. And also, for those that are calling, uh, for the snow removal program, uh, we may have a couple of slots left. Uh, I've never seen some phone calls, a lot of them, other wards. Uh, so, I will be going forward and, uh, and, uh, with respect to Alderman, um, and Alderman Gardner, and maybe if we move that somewhere, you know, this way, and, uh, so, and, um, and, uh, that'll be all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to briefly remind the fifth ward residents to continue to call, uh, the office, uh, with any complaints or, uh, issues that you're having in the ward. Uh, also, for the snow removal program this year, I will be, uh, doing the snow removal program. So, if you are interested in, uh, free snow removal program for seniors, I might add the disclaimer in there, for seniors, uh, you have to be sixty-five years, uh, of age or older. You have to reside in the property and you must be physically, uh, disabled or, or not able-bodied and have not, no able-bodied person in the house. Um, uh, there must be an accumulation of four inches of snow and snow removal will start after a snow event is completed. So, if you have any questions and you wanna get on the list, please feel free to contact my office. Seven zero eight, eight nine one, eight one nine five, seven zero eight, eight nine one, eight one ninety-five. Uh, also, I would like to wish, um, all of the beautiful residents of the fifth ward a happy holiday season. Uh, my family Christmas card, all right, that we put out yearly is, uh, will be coming out in the mail, so you should be getting that. And I wish you all a blessed and prosperous holiday season. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton?
Yes, um, and, uh, with the, on the table, on the table, to the next meeting, uh, people and families, people and families, I'd like to call and thank you first to, for, for the media opportunity to be a sponsor of their Thanksgiving dinner, um, as well as for our school district for giving me the opportunity to come and greet the students as part of a real read program. Um, you know, I read to my three-year-old son every night before he goes to bed, and I thought I knew how to read a book for small children until I did it in the classroom. So that's all new experience for me. Um, so thanks again to District 137 for giving me the opportunity to do that. Um, as we head into the winter season and, you know, I know we're, we're at the point here where we're grateful that snow isn't that falling yet, but I assume that it will. We live in Chicago, and once it does, you know, just remind the residents, you know, please, when we get a heavy snowfall, you can't keep your car on the streets like a cloud with your dad. Um, you know, I know we get a lot of calls where the winter type outside streets, not getting plowed, uh, you know, cars getting buried by the snow, you know, the public works gotta do the best they can, but when there's that much snow on the streets, you know, the cars get buried, and, you know, if you can move your car, if you can't, you know, let's, let's do the best to help our public work through the streets, play the responsible, it's still dark, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, Alderman. 7th Ward Alderman, Anthony Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, want to say happy holidays to all members of the council, along with all Calumet City residents, friends and family. Also, just want to remind all of the residents, 7th Ward residents, you should have received the 7th Ward newsletter at this particular point. If you did not receive it, the contents of that newsletter have been published in the recent city newsletter under the 7th Ward section, so please review that information. If you're interested in food assistance or COVID information, that newsletter has that information in there also. As far as board meetings, in the last city meeting, I announced that the, uh, tonight's meeting for the 7th Ward, which was to be held at the Public Training Center, was canceled. Uh, that meeting will be, along with future meetings, will be rescheduled starting February. Schedule will be announced, uh, next month, January 2022. And also, uh, those residents who have contacted, uh, our office regarding senior snow removal, we will contact you if we have not contacted you. But pretty much for the most part, uh, your snow will be removed based on, uh, if it's three inches or more, or if you are 65 or older, if it's three inches or more, or if there are any other, uh, issues that you're currently having with physicality, handicaps and so forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is our informational items to be placed on file, uh, file. We have some exciting presentations tonight. Want to acknowledge the letter from the Calumet City Historical Society thanking our city treasurer, Tarka, for the grant received from the city of Calumet City. Congratulations and good work, Treasurer Tarka. We also have tonight, uh, presentations. Uh, I want to thank the city council at the last meeting. You reviewed all of the applications we received from businesses in Calumet City. During our budget process, we put money into our budget to help small businesses in Calumet City. Uh, that is a great thing for our city because we have some great small businesses and businesses in our city, uh, who our residents not only, uh, go and cater to, but we have new businesses that are doing a great job in our community. And tonight, we're going to present them, uh, with the check, uh, that the city council approved and then also award. Uh, but I want to congratulate the council on your foresight because we created a great boots-on-the-ground program to not only reinvigorate, uh, our connection with our businesses, but we have two great individuals in our city with great futures who are helping Val Williams run the program along with Richard. So they're going to have, they're going to conduct the presentation tonight. I would just ask, when the businesses come up, one Alderman can go up and take a picture as we do the presentations for the $5,000 for the businesses, uh, tonight. So I would invite Jesse Tate, Richard Up, and Christina, uh, to talk about the program, do the presentation, and give us a list of the businesses that we're going to award the, uh, the check tonight. I believe this is their first time speaking publicly, so let's, let's take it easy on them and encourage them as they, uh, present our, our award for 2021. And this is a great way to end, uh, a great year, uh, for our city by recognizing these businesses. So I'll turn it over, uh, to Christina, Jesse, and Richard.
We will now be presenting the Small Business Recovery Program, uh, Grant Award, sorry. Um, we would like to thank all of the local businesses for their services that they provide for our residents and the city itself. Um, we thank you for choosing Calumet City to do your business and follow your dreams and continuing to support our residents and their needs, especially during these tough times that we've had these last few years. Um, we give a congratulations to all of our award recipients. We hope that this grant, grant helps you to enhance all of the vital work that you do for our city. Um, we will now begin calling on each of the businesses to come up to receive your checks. Owner is Marcela Simmons, and they're located at 5 Hickory Court.
Ed, I would ask that you guys get in the middle, uh, separate each other. We'll invite our treasurer up and one Alderman. You guys can do rock, paper, scissors, who goes first? And we'll... Oh, because Alderman Tillman is going to come up next and take pictures with...
Thank you. Thank everyone so much for believing in the work that we do at Alberta's Lily. Um, it's such a pleasure to be in a community and see a stark difference in Calumet City when it comes to building new businesses, established businesses, and I'm just so proud. I'm honored to be, uh, a resident of Calumet City, but I'm even more proud to be able to bring these services to, uh, the residents of Calumet City. We are Alberta's Lily, and if you Google our name, you can see what we do. Follow us on social media sites and, uh, continue to keep us in your prayers and as we continue to do our work. Thank you.
Athena's Pancake House, owned by Jose Villanueva, located at 580 Burnham Avenue.
My name is Jose. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you very much. This is going to really change a lot of things, and Merry Christmas.
Day 21 Sports Bar, uh, owned by Arlene Purdue, located at 1807 Sibley Boulevard.
I just want to thank Calumet City and all the Aldermen for allowing Day 21 Sports Lounge to give back to the community. Um, I actually was giving back to the community before I opened the Sports Lounge, but whenever you guys want to have a drink and enjoy yourself, it's an adult crowd, 35 and over, please stop by. Thank you.
Diani Groceries Incorporated, owned by Kirit Kumar Patel, located at 645 Burnham Avenue.
Thank you for the grant, and it's going to help me a lot with the business, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Kita King Independent Comprehensive Social Service, owned by Kita King, located Mansker's Loving Daycare, owned by Dolly Mansker, located at 361 Torrance Avenue.
Daycare to receive this check, this grant. My director, Michelle Curry, and I are very grateful. We've been in business for 17 years. It started with my parents from a home daycare, and we built on Torrance and Stewart 17 years ago. And this will help us. We had a fence put in for safety reasons. She comes in at 6:00. We have one who leaves at 6:00, and it's dark. And with the fence that we had installed, it gives us protection for our families, our children, my staff. This is going to help us get now the gate to close. Right now, we're doing it ourselves. So now I'll be able to hopefully get somebody who can come out and install the sliding gate for us. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Hive, owned by Brienne Bloom, located at 1651 Sibley Boulevard.
Mayor, I want to say thank you so much, and the Hive Nutrition is super grateful to be the change in our community through our nutrition. We are so excited to be in Calumet City. I'm still like, we opened up June 19th, and, um, we're constantly, um, creating a healthy alternative meals to help our customers and everyone stay healthy. So if you guys see the Hive, it's definitely a healthy vibe at the Hive, so say less, but, um, thank you so much. Uh, we have, I'm grateful. We have some customers that always come daily to support us. Thank you so much for keeping us first. All right, thank you.
Oasis Supermarket, owned by Samuel Dodsey, located at 1557 Sibley Boulevard.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for giving us opportunity to do more in the village of Calumet City. This will help us to enhance our business, and know Ford from Africa and Caribbean's are much more needed here. And I thank you so much for the response and the villages giving to us. This will help us to bring it and make it more better. Thank you for the opportunity. Merry Christmas.
Vital Health and Wellness Center Incorporated, owned by Lori Howard, located at 1851 Sibley Boulevard.
My name is Lori, and, uh, I'd like to thank the mayor, city council members, and most of all, God, for this opportunity. Uh, it's really a blessing to be able to, be able to receive this grant. Uh, I've had my business now for 19 years in Calumet City. I'm also a resident of Calumet City. So I considered it a real honor during this pandemic. It's been very difficult, but I thank God for this opportunity to receive this grant, to be able to continue the business and be able to add additional services. Thank you, and you all have a happy holidays.
Well, the, well, the new boots-on-the-ground program, we're here for the businesses, so if you need anything from the city, there's anything that we can do, you all can call our office if we can be of assistance, 708-891-8139. And we just want to thank all the businesses that took part in the ceremony. We just thank, we thank God for you all, and we thank you for being in our city. And so that's pretty much all we have right now, but we just want to thank you all.
Let's give another round of applause to Richard, Christina, and Jesse. So part of this is, this is our first time doing this in our city. Uh, we have the opportunity to use of, uh, some of our care's money to recognize our small businesses. And as many of you heard, a lot of the small businesses are residents of Calumet City, and they brought their businesses to Calumet City to help not only our residents, but we want to make sure that we show them that we appreciate, uh, the hard work you do for not only the customers of Calumet City, residents, visitors, but we want to help you make sure that, uh, we keep this going. Uh, we also have started a PSA program where we have small businesses who want to record a PSA that we, the city pays for. Uh, we have live on our website that we can send out to residents to encourage them to shop your business as well. So as we continue to improve this program, those are the faces of the program, along with Val Williams, uh, who are going to make sure that we bring our businesses, uh, back in, uh, connection with our city, uh, so to make sure that we're growing together. So thank you for that. Uh, we also have my wife, Sabrina Jones, who, uh, the Women with Calumet City, uh, program that's working in conjunction with the Boots on, Boots on the Ground program. Uh, there are probably 19 members of the Women with, uh, Calumet City Committee, and I want to thank all of them for their hard work as well, uh, not only in reviewing the applications, right, doing the recommendations, uh, but also going out and showing love to these businesses, uh, in Calumet City. So again, thank you. Uh, you can watch the PSAs on Channel 4. Uh, right now, we have six businesses on Channel 4 that have recorded PSAs. If you want to record a PSA, there's a link on our city website. Uh, again, it allows you free publicity in Calumet City and, uh, the surrounding areas of Calumet City, uh, to help grow your business. Thank you, Richard, Christina, Jesse. I appreciate you guys for, uh, doing the program. Um, I guess you guys can have a seat now. All right, the next item on the... All right, the next item on the agenda is new business. We have no items under Item A on the new business, 9A or 9B. The next item on the agenda is Item C. I will request that we remove Item 1 from the agenda, and also the duplicate Item Number 8 on the agenda for the record. Is that correct, Alderman? So we're removing Items C1 under resolutions and ordinances, and C8 on the agenda. So for the record, we're taking action on Items C2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. And for the record, Items 6 and 7 are the tax levies, which our Finance Director explained, and also the special service tax. Before we take, entertain a motion, City Treasurer, did you have anything to tell the public about the tax ordinance or the special service? I know you worked hard on this as well.
No, I think the Finance Director summed it up pretty well. Thank you.
All right. So no further questions. I would like to entertain a motion to approve Items C2 through 7.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, seconded by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Navarrete? Navarrete?
Yes.
So on a roll call vote, we have six members voting in favor. The motion passes to pass the ordinances and resolutions as presented on the agenda for approval. And also for the record, item, let me go back to it briefly, Resolution C2 is a resolution concerning Applebee's that we passed previously, or we didn't pass previously, and our attorneys recommended that we pass this. We have Don in the audience representing the Applebee's. As we know from Alderman Smith, Applebee's is going to be turned into a great restaurant in a couple of months.
That's right.
So we look forward to going there and eating. Don, I don't know if you, I'll give you an opportunity to say a few words briefly.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really a great council meeting. I've been to probably a thousand Village Board meetings and City Council meetings over 42 years as an economic development consultant. And you don't run into a lot of municipalities that have such good humor going on during the meeting. So I live in Lynwood for 34 years. I lived in Lansing 12 years before that. I'm a South Suburban guy. I don't believe in slipping across the border like so many other people have. I grew, my first apartment out of college was at River Oaks Villa. You probably, and then I was the lifeguard and pool manager there. I spent a lot, I spent my misspent youth at the Castaways and the disco. Also Tavern in the Oaks was a great place for food and a cocktail.
Yes, it was.
I believe in Calumet City. My first job at age 16 in 1966 was in the brand-new River Oaks Shopping Center at the Sears. And recently, about a year or so ago, I was able with a group of people to go on a tour of that. And I would love to see an adaptive reuse of that facility. So speaking briefly, the former Applebee's, which has been vacant now for three and a half years, which everybody drives by and they wonder, what is going on with this place? Well, 79th Street Barbecue, owned by Jill Payne and her husband Vance Russell, are planning on investing around $650,000 initially into this location and creating 30 jobs, full and part-time. My preference to them is hire local qualified residents. If it snows and you have an employee from Orland Park, he's not coming to work. If you hire somebody from Calumet City and it snows and it's three blocks away, they'll come to work. So I think, and by the way, the Mayor mentioned good food. I've had the ribs, and they're very good.
Yes.
So I can't wait for them to be open, and I'm anticipating, or they are anticipating, opening by the end of the first quarter. So I think that's good news. Doing economic development for this length of time, I have experienced when you have a new restaurant move into the community, that takes over a building that's been vacant for quite some time, that will start attracting other businesses to that area. It will bring more customers to the area. So I think you guys are on the right path, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we've known each other for a long time, and when you were a great economic developer, we know that you did great things, and happy to know that you're still doing that, you know, being the coordinator.
People won't let me retire.
Yeah. Alderman, this is in your ward.
Yes, it is.
I know you worked hard on this.
Yes, I did. We met formally tonight, but Jill and Russell, Mr. Russell and Ms. Payne have spoken very, very highly of him and his services, their consulting services, his consulting services and so forth. So I've been working with, been working with this over almost a year now to make this fruition. And I published it in my newsletter. I talked about it all throughout the previous campaign. And so I'm just glad to finally see it come to fruition. So thank you.
Mayor, I would like to add one last remark. If I'm doing economic development for 42 years, and I've been an advisor to the Mayors and Managers Association, the Chamber, numerous municipalities, I know almost all the economic development staff people in the South Suburbs. And I will tell you that you have, in Val Williams, one of the best I've worked with.
That's right.
You're welcome.
That's right.
You're welcome. Item D of Financial Matters, I would ask, in conversation with the Alderman, I would ask that Item 8 be removed from the agenda. This is the after-school program that we've had conversations about bringing to Calumet City, which will be a citywide program with not only our school districts, but also with partnerships with local communities. I want to remove this item to allow the Alderman more time to bring in more partnerships with other organizations, discuss this. This program that we're talking about champs, is united with former President Barack Obama, Nike. They gave a great presentation to our city council, and we want to make sure that we continue the conversation and make sure that we bring it back to start after-school programming in the middle or towards the end of January. So I would just request that this item be removed from the agenda.
Excuse me, Mayor. Can you just defer it to committee?
No, I would rather that we remove it from the agenda.
Just remove it, okay.
And then we'll have a conversation, Alderman.
All right.
Are there any other requests, Alderman, for items removed? If not, Alderman, can you please make a motion to approve items on the agenda as so stated?
Mayor, if I may, with your removal of Item Number 8, there is one change to the account number in Item Number 9. Replace the item as so stated on the agenda with miscellaneous expenses 0109952990. That's Item Number 9. 10, I'm sorry, 0109952990.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
You're welcome.
With that amendment, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the items as still stated on the agenda under Financial Matters.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, seconded by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Navarrete? Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. We're at unfinished business. Alderman, if you don't mind, we'll start on it. Did we start on this side last time, or that side? We'll start with you, Alderman Navarrete, on the unfinished business.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to wish the residents of Calumet City, along with the employees, let the officials be very healthy, and happy holidays and New Year. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Happy New Year to you and your family as well. Alderman, Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. To the residents of the 3rd Ward, a reminder to call my office if you want to be added to the shovel program that we have for senior citizens, 708-891-8193. And I just want to wish all the residents and city folks a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say, first thing, I want to congratulate all the residents of the state and city businesses. This is a future program, and I'm looking at a lot of small businesses. I'm really excited to be able to do more, to inspire more business from the 4th Ward. Secondly, I'd like to wish the residents of Calumet City a very happy and safe, prosperous, and happy holiday. I'm very glad to be here.
Thank you. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish all my colleagues here in the room tonight, the city council, a very happy and prosperous holiday season, and Happy New Year and Christmas and all that good stuff. Take time with your families. Be well spent. Everybody gets in the room as well. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. First of all, to echo my colleagues, I'd like to wish a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year to all my colleagues, as well as all of the Calumet City. Excuse me. I'd also just like to take one moment to address, you know, something that's happened recently. A couple of weeks ago, I took the opportunity to do something that most elected officials do not do, and I took responsibility for failure on my part. I addressed the council and the city as a whole at a council meeting and apologized for my delay in getting back to residents on their requests, you know, due to some issues with my day job. Unfortunately, that apology was taken and clipped out of a YouTube video recording of the council meeting and used against me, an excellent message sent out to the residents of Calumet City, to say that the 6th Ward was not getting service requests that they were receiving or requiring because I was spending too much time on my day job. So I want to assure the 6th Ward residents that your responses and your requests to my office aren't being considered. When I said that I was apologizing for the delay in getting back to you, that was my delay in responding to you to let you know that those requests were being submitted to the appropriate department. So I hope that in the future, whoever it is that is doing that does not continue to take my context and my statements out of context and use them against me. As the residents of the 6th Ward know, their requests, if they compare at the time of the patch. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to wish my colleagues that are not on the floor, sick, that are sick and ill, best wishes to get well very, very soon. Also, I want to wish all of the residents of Calumet City, as well as family and friends, a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and the prosperous New Year in 2022. I want to congratulate the recipients of the business grants, business grants we recently give out. And also, just want to make sure that the seniors who are contacting the office, please contact the office if you're interested in snow removal. You can contact at 708-891-8197, or you can email at asmith@calumetcity.org. Also, I want to thank the Park of River Oaks residents who came out to the recent Cook County Forest Preserve meeting regarding the golf courses and their statuses. I will be calling a meeting, and I'm working with the HOA to call a meeting very, very soon and start organizing subsequent campaign efforts to support the golf course. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Engineer, do you want to wish the community happy holidays?
Yes, I would, Mayor. And yes, Merry Christmas to you, Mayor, and the council, the clerk, and our wonderful staff here and the residents, and hope you have a healthy and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you like to wish the community?
Yes, I would like to wish the residents a happy holiday. I've received a lot of calls and text messages regarding the mayor asking me to resign. I will not be resigning. So you do not have to look forward to that. I mean, I want to also let you know that there is no judge or jury here. So before you make any assumptions or decisions based upon what you have heard from the mayor and his office and administration, that you remember that the mayor is not a judge or jury here. And so, no, I will not be resigning for you all who have asked me that question. And again, happy holidays.
Well, we look forward to working with the clerk. And City Treasurer, Harper?
Thank you, Mayor. First to my colleagues, I wish each and every one of you and your families all the blessings that the holiday season can bring. On behalf of myself, my family, all the members of the Treasurer's Office, and also all the members of our finance team, to the residents of the city of Calumet City, we wish you a very blessed and joyous Christmas season, and the best of prosperity to each and every one of you in 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. And we definitely want to end our meeting and our season on a happy note. And for my family, my wife Sabrina Jones, my sons, we want to thank each and every one of you for participating in Calumet City government. We have a long ways to go. We have some exciting energy for 2022. We want to encourage everyone to spend time with your family this holiday season. Please visit the businesses who you see here tonight in our community. And we also ask that you say a special prayer for our first responders, and also the people and the employees of Calumet City as we go through another season of goodness, blessings. And I want to wish everyone a happy New Year, happy holidays. Please be safe. And please, if you need any assistance from my office or any of the Aldermen, you can call us and we'll make sure that we get the services. So on that note, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Well, I'm sorry, somebody on Zoom, we can give that to.
No, it was Gardner Smith.
Gardner Smith? So we have a motion made by Alderman Gardner, seconded by Alderman Smith. Alderman, favorite?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.